Okay, I'm going to call us to order at 1:03. Can we, do you want to approve the agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I will second that. Is, are we the only voting people on this committee?
Yeah.
So there you go. There you have an agenda. We have an agenda. So consider approval of minutes of Facilities Subcommittee meeting held July 3rd.
If I may, so I apologize, it's just really been about capacity. Those meeting, those minutes are not completed yet. I apologize. But we're going to have to bring the June 3rd Board meeting, or the June 3rd meeting minutes to the next Subcommittee meeting. If we can make a motion to actually remove that, that would be great. I apologize.
That's fine. We could just pass it to the next one.
Just pass it. Is, are there any other changes actually that you need to make to the agenda?
No, that's all.
Great. So is there anybody here for public comment?
So it looks like you have a few hands up there, Judy.
Okay, I'll take Laura Babbitt. Laura, do you want to speak?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi Laura.
Everyone, and thank you for this time to speak. I wanted to comment around Longfellow Facilities because now is the time. As a parent who has lived through construction at Berkeley High School, and most recently at Rosa Parks, the advantages of upgrading the Longfellow Facilities next year are unprecedented.
Sorry, is everyone else, is Laura breaking up for everybody else or just me?
I've got her okay.
I do, I do. I can hear her, okay.
Sorry Laura, why don't you go ahead and start again?
Okay, so now is the time. As a parent who has lived through construction at Berkeley High School, and most recently at Rosa Parks, the advantages of upgrading the Longfellow Facilities next year are unprecedented. There would be no additional expense of removing, of moving in portables, staff time to build new traffic control systems, and learning would not be impacted by the inconvenience of noise and construction. In addition, as next year's fifth graders visit the middle schools, they wouldn't have to choose a school in which the kids have to run around the block for gym laps, as we can put in a turf field with a jogging circle. They wouldn't have to choose a school that will require them to carry all their books and gym clothes around, as lockers could be installed. They wouldn't have to choose a school with a high prison resembling fit, as new fencing can be installed. When they become sixth graders, their teachers can have a teacher's lounge that gives them a space to relax and retreat as they break. Their classrooms can be fully modernized with technology to enhance learning. Their library can offer more comfortable seating for reading, lounging, and community building in the midst of its wonderful selection of books. Next year, the school that was converted grade-wise into a middle school can also physically join the ranks of a middle school. The time is now, and we can do it with this Board's and Committee's intentional support now. Year-round employees are staffed to gather community input, develop the plan, and see its execution begin in the fall. The time is now if you provide the leadership and direction needed now to take advantage of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Should I, why don't we go to Ms. Pachell? Crystal.
Okay, unmuted now, yeah?
Yeah, Crystal, hold on one second. Judy, can you hear Crystal? She's muted too. I think she can. Go ahead, Crystal.
I can see your lips moving.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had Rob Collier actually next.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Rob, do you want to speak? All right, Crystal, why don't you go ahead? We'll let Rob go afterwards if he still wants to. Crystal?
Well, I think, I think Jay gave Rob, turned Rob on.
Yeah, I'd be glad to speak after the others. If, I defer to Crystal. And I think Adam Berzen also wants to.
I think it's me now.
Okay, Crystal?
Yeah, okay. I'll start over because no one can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, my name is Crystal Pachell, and I'm a math teacher and an RTI coordinator at Longfellow Middle School. When I saw that Longfellow was listed as receiving less money per capita than the other sites, I was saddened, but I was also sadly not surprised. I'd actually just read the 31-page report from our listening campaign, which clearly states that our district does not consider our under-resourced and under-funded school a major priority, that the efforts it would take to change previous longstanding systems of what they call equality and neutrality into a real system of modern-day equity could feel insurmountable, so much that no one would even want to tackle it. But we are proactive and resilient at Longfellow, and if we have to shout from the rooftops that our school deserves to be at minimum equal footing as the other two schools, then we'll shout. I sat on the Makerspace Committee a couple of years ago and attended many meetings about the work it would take to realize this amazing program and the work that students would produce if that realization came to fruition. Your project list states that the work should, quote, "address equity issues so all students have access to high-quality programs," end quote. So as I sit here and think of all the really cool offerings at the other two sites, including the after-school program, and think about you delaying our program while simultaneously giving more funding to the other schools for CTE on top of additional science funding that we're not slated to receive, I'm just not seeing the equity there. I want to read a quote from Matt Hinkley, who was essential in getting the Makerspace program off the ground. This is from April 2018. He said, quote, "We hope to move from the launch phase of Longfellow's Makerspace, i.e. tool acquisition and elective course, into a more robust connection with the school's academic program by offering formal opportunities for students in the after-school program to participate in Makerspace learning that will support their learning in math and science classes during the day," end quote. How long will it take us to get there? That was over two years ago, and I don't feel it would be justified to postpone our work till 2024, '25, when our school needs and deserves the funding and the work right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm now going to go. I'm sorry, you said there's Adam, I guess. I think Rob wants to go last, so I will allow him that. And so Adam Berzine, why don't you go next?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Adam Berzen, and I'm the head of the Science Department at Longfellow, as well as one of the Makerspace teachers. And I want to begin by thanking the members of the Facilities Subcommittee for your time and serious consideration. What I'd like to speak about today is why the Longfellow CTE Makerspace program timeline should be accelerated and the scope broadened because of the current unique opportunity, also a logical return on investment. The opportunity we face now is the reality of COVID-19. I have heard, what no doubt all the rest of you have heard as well, that we will almost certainly be teaching much next year as a distance learning and/or hybrid education split between home and school. Although the reality of this global pandemic creates enormous issues within education, it also provides an opportunity. With fewer or even no students on campus, the Facilities Team could move quickly to upgrade the space without disrupting academics. If there were ever a time for campus improvements, this year would be it. Not only is this not an opportunity to be missed, but pushing forward to the next phase of upgrades represents a purely logical return on investment. Last year, Longfellow's Makerspace was outfitted with new furniture, allowing for modular reorganization of the space and flexible teaching arrangements. However, at present, it is nearly impossible to use the space flexibly because there are very few electrical outlets in the space. The open ceiling produces too much of an echo, and there's no ventilation. This utterly undercuts our goal of using the space for collaboration with other teachers. Because as it stands, if there are two classes in the space, only one of them can have power. Students can't hear their teachers well due to the echo, and they are limited in the kinds of projects they can do because of ventilation. At present, we cannot use saws, spray paint, sanders, certain kinds of glues, fabric dyes, and many other tools which apply is critical to a comprehensive maker education due to the lack of ventilation. Continuing to do projects with only cardboard and glue guns or purely digital technology is a waste of the resources already committed in the form of the new furniture. Furthermore, I would argue that these improvements must be made as return on the investment of Longfellow itself. The official name of our school is still Longfellow Arts and Technology Magnet Middle School. Yet, other than the efforts of a few dedicated teachers, we do not live up to our name as a school focused on technology. Over the years, this district has spent millions of dollars on Longfellow, but almost always to bring it up to the bare minimum standard. Now is the time to invest in Longfellow so that the USD can see a return on this investment in the form of student outcomes. The place to start this investment is in our CTE Makerspace. I urge you to move forward on accelerating and broadening the next phase of upgrading Longfellow's Makerspace. It is the logical and equitable thing to do. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Now I am going to call on Rob.
Thank you. I just want, and I believe Leanna Lewis is trying to get in, and she...
Rob, why don't you speak? I'm going to call you in order. So I am facilitating. So Rob, I'm asking you to speak now, and then I will have Leanna speak.
Fine, I'm just flagging that she's trying to get on. And so I just wanted to clarify one point, and I thank you all for having this meeting and considering these issues. You know, there's naturally kind of a, what do I want to call it, almost an oppositional nature to these sorts of requests, but really it isn't that way because there's, this is no knock on the Facilities Department because you all did what you could with the material that you had. You had a different principal, a different school leadership with different points of view that, who did not prioritize the CTE STEM-focused Makerspace. And that's no knock on the Facilities Department whatsoever. No knock on the Facilities Master Plan because you, you worked with the materials you had to work with to create that Facilities Master Plan. Now you have a new leadership. You couldn't have checked with that new leadership before because the new leadership, the new principal wasn't on board yet. Ditto with the vision plan. That wasn't ready yet, so you couldn't have consulted with that. So no knock that neither the master plan nor your presentation to the school board included the vision plan or the new principals input. But now we have a new opportunity to listen to people like Adam Berzen, Crystal Pachell, all these parents, and take this new opportunity to move forward sooner than later, hopefully, on a Makerspace 2.0 project that will really help transform Longfellow in the ways that it desperately needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And so now I am going to call on Leanna Lewis.
Good afternoon. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So thank you all for, I managed to get in, so happy to have gotten in, and thank you for having this and hearing from me today. I am here today and wanting to just ask that we are thoughtful again as we get ready to go through this process and this balance between looking to use order to guide us and really using an ethical and moral framework also to guide us. There is a much repeated and much quoted Martin Luther King quote, right, that reminds us very much that, especially for Black folks, this stumbling block often isn't racism in the forms that we kind of most see it or think of it very explicitly, but this way in which moderates, and I think in Berkeley, it is true, right, this way in which white moderates are more devoted to order than justice and really this preference for negative peace in the absence of tension to a positive peace in the presence of justice. And so I think these kinds of allocations are going to, right, bring forth all kinds of tension because anytime we're making decisions about how resources are allocated, especially financial resources, I think there is always going to be this tension. And I just want to remind us of that ethical and moral obligation to really face head-on our separate and unequal reality at middle school, right? A cursory look at the facilities makes it clear that they aren't equal. That the students themselves mention, when we have the other students from the other two middle schools even come to Longfellow for sporting events more than once, we hear what their thoughts are about our facility and what it looks like and their experience there. So it isn't, it isn't the same. And so I think as you think about resources and how they get allocated, this gives us an opportunity to really think about our investments and how we choose investments based on that ethical and moral obligation in terms of what we think and how we see our schools and those realities with the understanding that that won't necessarily come without pushback and without making folks pretty upset about that. But with our middle school and Longfellow as a middle school with kind of 60% Black and Brown students to constantly be having to like go through the process and make sure we went through all the forms, right? And again, hearing a couple of weeks ago and again today, the structural barriers as we keep having new leadership that then puts us again further behind the line of the orders that have to be followed in order to then get resources is again burdening the already burdened. And so I really encourage you to think about these allocations and both the CTE proposal as well as the theater proposal and the parts of that that will be theater to really think about what is our investment to the students who are at that school? What is our requirements to that part of our city? And how can that be led by really what is equitable as it relates to our investment in that community? And lastly, I just want you to think about what the, the kids, right? The kids in that community deserve to have a school that they feel good about and a site that they roll up to each day feeling good about that and our commitment to really ensuring that that happens and that those kids get prioritized. So thank you all, and I can't wait to hear more about what you end up deciding and where you're going.
Thanks, Ms. Lewis. I have one more speaker, so I'm going to go call on Vicki Davis, and then I'm going to end the public comments period.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you for having me today. I wanted to speak about Longfellow, and I chose Longfellow for my student in spite of the deficits it has compared to King where I was assigned and Willard where most of my daughter's classmates are attending because of specific individual faculty that I thought would well support her and was a good match for her. And I had to overlook a lot of the deficits as a parent. As we're moving forward in future years and we're dealing with the middle school crisis that we have in inequity and having one-choice school versus assigned schools, I feel like anybody can put on the hat of a parent and say, if this is my child, would I choose this school for my child? And I feel like there's been lots of talk about administration who haven't prioritized things or parents who haven't given the feedback or reports that need to be done or surveys that need to be filled out. But I feel like any one of you can put on the hat and walk into the halls of Longfellow and say, would I send my student here over King? What does this school have that the other schools don't have or vice versa? When you walk into King, you can see just visually how different it is. You can see by the list of electives that they offer. And often people say, oh, these electives aren't available because we don't have the staff to teach them. There's a beautiful theater at Longfellow, but there's no staff to teach it. Well, again, there's all of these facility projects that you could simply do without asking anybody. And so what I'm saying is, is if you put on the hat of a parent and walk into that school, what will make you choose that school over the other locations? And those are the facilities projects that you could prioritize. You could prioritize the outside space. You could prioritize the building space. You could prioritize the STEM CTE space. You could prioritize the fact that there's no lockers. There's millions of things to do, and the fact that the projects that were chosen initially were not even slated to happen until later years, I feel like now is the time to pick any one of those things and focus on those to bring this school up to the level so that when you're comparing the middle schools, you're not saying, I'm choosing Longfellow despite the fact that it's not as good as the other schools, but I have this personal reason to go there, but that it's on equal footing and that a parent viewing that school will not only see it as equal to the others, but then there might even be something about it that's great that make them want to choose it over the others. And the reason that this is so important is because as we've seen in this district, people change, people move. So when I select a location based on the people there, there's no guarantee that those people are going to be there in the next year or the year after. But when you work on a facilities project, that facility, that building, that structure, that stays there. That's an investment that you can guarantee, parents, that is going to be there for years to come. Where when you pick a person, that someone's saying, okay, this person won me over, that person is not a guarantee. But work on a facilities project is, and that's something that the parents can look at and say, I see these great things in this building and this place and this equipment that I know will be there. And so I ask you to use that hat when you're making your decisions. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Davis, thank you for your comments. I do want to tell you it is not difficult for the people on this Board to put their hat, of the parent hat on because I think every single Board member either went to or sent their kids to Longfellow. So I just want to let you know that and let you all know that. You know, my kid had Crystal, Ms. Pachell, and I have more to say, but I want to allow actually our Facilities Department maybe speak to the, I guess, the comments and maybe the alarm about Longfellow. So John, do you want to go ahead? Sorry, do you want to go ahead?
No, absolutely. Thank you. So I appreciate the comments and the feedback as well. As Mr. Collier talked about, we did go through a process. The process was under the former leadership at that school. We actually tried to do a lot of community outreach, particularly to all of the schools, but that was dependent upon school leadership as to who came in the room. Additionally, it was also that we did a open meeting on a Saturday for the entire city of Berkeley to come to. We had advertised it for several weeks to actually get feedback about particular schools. And it was from that work of the Facilities Master Plan that the Superintendent's Work Group, which was a large group that was convened for about a year-long process, had created the project list. There's two very important things that I just want to mention, actually three, very briefly, and then we can move into the presentation. First and foremost is, there's been, there's been some talk about having a lot of work done, you know, starting right away, you know, starting work this summer and having it done by the end of the fall. And unfortunately, with the constraints that we have as schools, everything that we do goes through the Division of State Architect. Nothing happens that quickly. If we said, if the Board were to say today to do a project at Longfellow or at any school, there's several months of planning and design that goes into that. Then there's anywhere from six months to a year of waiting for approval from the state. Then there's contracts that have to go through, and there's an arduous process with that per ed code before we can even put a shovel in the ground. So I say that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as we get on to the presentation, but I think that's important to note. The second is, there's been some conversation, and I know it was mentioned today, about dollars spent per capita. Facilities programs, it's very easy to look at what's being spent per capita, and I actually commend a lot of folks who have emailed about that for doing that. But facilities programs are not designed on a per capita basis. There are projects at some schools that may have an absolutely significant impact that will have a much smaller dollar value versus a larger value elsewhere. Additionally, when we do projects, even if the project is very, well, I'll use Rosa Parks as an example. Everyone, for the most part, I think most of the folks in the community know what's going on at Rosa Parks. Rosa Parks was simply a roof replacement of the multipurpose room. But what happens is, is when you go into the Division of State Architect for Approval, they look at a lot of other things, and based on what they decide, it actually drives a lot of ancillary projects. So at Rosa Parks, for example, that roofing replacement turned into a roof replacement where we're having to do multiple upgrades to bathrooms, we're having to make a lot of ADA changes, we're having to actually completely rebuild a good portion of the elliptical canopy outside, et cetera. That, that project pretty much tripled in size based on the state requirements of today's code. So my point to that is, is even if it was to try to be distributed on a per capita basis, which it can't be, it would not work just simply because of the requirements that are driven by the state. You know what? I apologize. I've lost my train of thought, so I apologize. We can definitely move into the presentation if you'd like, or if there's more questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I actually would like to, to call on Ms. Stevenson to see if she has anything to add because I know that, well, she's the one who took me for the tour of the Makerspace that exists now where the cafeteria used to be. And so I just want to give you an opportunity to put in a word if you have anything to say, but you don't, like, no pressure, you don't have to.
You're on mute, Shanita.
You're on mute.
I got, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been with the district for 15 years, and my role has changed from kind of being an administrative coordinator and providing support to now actually getting out to the schools, and I can see firsthand how our facilities kind of play out amongst all the different schools. And I was the main person to provide the data that John has for some of the data points related to our middle schools because I've been here for some time. I do want to acknowledge that it is important to kind of take a holistic view at our school sites, in a sense, and I'm excited to hear from all the different voices from the Longfellow community. And that's something I am very interested to get to learn more about and to listen to from that, from all the communities in a sense, and actually check in with the students to see kind of what things that they would like as well. So I know that this Zoom platform does give people more opportunities for people to attend and be a part of it. And so I am open to just kind of listening and getting out there and continuing to listen and to understand just how we, how facilities can, you know, provide a way for students to be a part of the process and also to support the parents. But I just wanted to acknowledge from all the time that I've been out at the site, I do see just various things at all of our sites. And there are some things that I look forward to hearing John present on some of the short things that we could potentially do. But again, I do want us to focus on making sure that we do have some opportunity for all parents to get an opportunity to, to check in, and staff members too. Thank you, staff, for coming.
Thank you, Shanita. Ty, I want to, I know this isn't on the agenda, but I'm doing it anyway. So now that I've announced that I'm not going to run again, I feel like I have total, like, leeway. Anyways, do you have anything to add?
I have a lot of thoughts, but I'm going to wait till the presentation.
Okay, well, I will call it myself then. And I did want to say that I appreciate this advocacy for Longfellow. I mean, I think that it is actually a school that many of us, I mean, all of us on the Board feel very connected to, you know, in that way, we feel connected to all the schools. But you know, there's a certain special something when you send your kids someplace. So I did want to say that I feel like this has become oppositional, and I really appreciate Director Kalis and actually a couple of others of you talking about how I believe that the current plans for the district, for the school were at least impacted in great part by the former, the previous leader of the school. And I think that with a new principal coming in and a new vice principal, it will allow us to, you know, expand our vision. And so I want to go ahead and turn this over to Director Kalis, to Executive Director Kalis, sorry, to go ahead and present. But I just wanted to make sure that, and I believe that Ty agrees with that also, like, you know, we are very committed to having our middle schools, you know, investing in all of our middle schools. And, and, you know, there's, there's different, there are different, obviously, there are some different limitations in the different sites. And I know that we've invested in Longfellow. Like, this isn't the first time we've talked about investing in Longfellow, or that we have done. So I want to make sure you all understand that. I also wanted to say, sorry to you, that this, that the kind of understanding or presumption that there won't be kids at the school, I think that the actual, the state government has just told us that that's not, that's not actually a possibility for the fall. So we will have students at the school. So, I don't know, you want to go ahead, John?
Sure, thank you. So first, Dr. Stevens just texted me and he asked me to apologize. He's, he's planning on trying to be in this as well, but he's also in negotiations right now. So he apologizes that he's not in the meeting. The second thing is, is while I was talking before, I completely blanked and I lost my train of thought. And I looked- And I looked down and realized that I had written it down. So I apologize. But the point that I was trying to make is that the superintendent's work group that actually worked to create the project list, I don't know that everyone understands the, the task that they had in front of them. And I think it is important to realize that not only is it the funding not generated on a per capita basis, but prioritizing the funding is very difficult, especially when we consider that when we looked at the facilities needs assessment as a whole, if we were to attack the facilities needs assessment, which is part of the master plan, and do everything in the needs assessment that absolutely, that, that should be done based on a recommendation, as well as all of the desired projects, we had a total come in roughly over a 10-year period of $1.3 billion. Unfortunately, that's pretty normal for school districts of our size. But with that, we went to bonding capacity of $380 million in order to honor a promise that had been made, I believe, 15 or 20 years ago by a previous board as far as the tax rate. So with that being said, we have three items on the agenda, the first of which is project updates. And then the second to deal specifically with what we're talking about today. And they deal with middle, the middle school measure I project comparisons as well as possible project considerations. So what I'd like to do is grab your screen and put on a presentation right now and actually talk about the B and C first, which is the middle school I, measure I allocation, as well as discuss possible project considerations for Longfellow, if that's okay. So I'm going to try to share my screen here.
It's a very cool background you have, John.
Thank you.
Clothes and everything.
All right, thank you. One second. I'm trying to get there. I apologize. I'm a little bit world to the, little bit new to the world of Mac, so. Okay, can everyone see the presentation that I have up?
Nope.
No. Okay, I don't know what's going on. Sorry. Hang on one second.
You're doing that share screen button?
I'm trying, yeah. How about now?
Nope.
No. Okay, let's try this again. No?
No.
What's going on here?
You want to send it to, to Ty or to Shanita or myself and?
If you send it to me, I'll do it. I'll put it up there if you want.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Sorry about that, folks.
Wait, email it to me.
Yep, I'm doing that right now.
I'm also pulling up mine too, if you want, John, but send it to Ty.
I know, I was just assuming Shanita that you kind of had it figured out, but.
You know, I do on, on my PC, but I've learned that for Zoom, Ty, it should be in your inbox. My Mac works much better, but I'm a little bit new to the world of Mac. So Ty, I sent that to you.
All right, it hasn't come through, but I'm sure it will in a second.
You know, there are some, I want to make sure everyone is accessing the chats. Actually, I noticed that some of these are being put on just to the panelists. And I will, I'm going to copy them to the panelists and attendees so everyone can see them.
Ty, did you receive that? Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, great. So if we go to the first slide, the presentation overview, I wanted to talk about measure G planning, how it came to be, what was involved, as well as the factors and the criteria that was used to drive the projects. Next would be the measure G board approved, or excuse me, the measure G board approved allocations and project types. There was a request at the last board meeting to understand out of the last bonds what has been spent at the different middle schools. So we've included that information here that Shanita worked to pull for us. The planning process for these types of facilities projects I wanted to talk about. And the reason why is, as I alluded to before, there's been a lot of conversation about making some things happen very quickly. And I, I just want folks to understand what all is involved with that. And then also, we, we were able to go back and do some research, and Shanita was instrumental in this, in really looking at what have been some requests that we could consider to be low-hanging fruit, things that we can be, that we can do sooner than later. And if the board were to choose to go that route, which it's, I'm hearing that I think they may. And then also some things that we just know that we can do that would definitely improve the overall school. And then from there, you know what? I apologize, this reallocation and planning process, but it's next steps. So.
Can I, John, can I just interrupt for one second? Just, Judy, we're going till 2:30, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So will you, just, John, keep that in mind as you go through the presentation?
Absolutely, absolutely. So first one is the measure G plan. So this is a culmination of the following. There was a facilities needs assessment that was done, which turned into the facilities master plan. There was campus stakeholder engagement, and all of that stakeholder engagement was driven by the principals. So facilities department reaches out to the principals. We talk about that we want to come in with the master planners and really listen to the needs. And then it is up to the principal as to who they invite. At some campuses, we had room full of people where we were, had to move to other rooms to house them all. At other campuses, there was very little involvement. So there was that engagement. We did do community outreach and engagement as well, even on the weekends, as I've talked about. And then there was the superintendent's work group. That was a year-long process to understand the facility's needs and establish those project priorities, to understand the bonding capacity versus the actual facility's needs that we saw out there. And then the cost and implications of bond issuances and what effect it would have on the local tax rate. That's very important because obviously, while the Berkeley community was incredibly generous in passing this, this bond, which is $380 million, in order to, to respect the tax rate that we've promised, we have to be very careful as to how we do the issuances. Just because if we issue the money too early, it would drive the tax rate up too high. And the other factor with that is once we issue the money, we actually begin working against arbitrage to actually pay up, use those dollars towards facilities projects. So the facilities master planning process, this first started off with an assessment and then planning status. There was a campus-by-campus analysis done. Every room, every broom closet, every space of every campus in the district was looked at. Patterns and overview was considered because we did see a lot of consistency among patterns and needs at special schools. The demographics, the enrollment, the capacity, all of these things are taken into consideration. And when we talk about demographics, what we're really talking about is the number of students that are in the school, the number of students that we anticipate to come into the school within the next so many years. That's in a demographic study. And then really just to see what the, what the long-term use of that school will look like. And then the facilities master plan also helped us to set the priorities to move forward. The, the next slide is one that the board has seen and the board has voted and approved on. And actually, it has animation. If you want to click it one more time, please, President Alper, Vice President Alper. So we had guiding principles and criteria. So the principles that were adopted were to develop in accordance with bond, or excuse me, board-approved design standards, achievable with reasonably anticipated funds, promote equity across the district, and incorporate the needs of a diverse student body. The criteria that was used for consideration is, as I said, what we identified was about $1.3 billion worth of projects. So we asked several key questions of each project, and those are listed there, to really help score and rate those projects to move them up on the project list for the superintendent's work group to then to consider. That criteria included the improvement of teaching and learning opportunities, improving campus safety while creating a welcoming environment, correcting operational deficiencies, expanding options for PLCs or education focused on career development, advancing the district's sustainability goals, and then correcting infrastructure deficiencies. So the next slide shows the capital planning budget that the board did approve back on November 6th, along with the last set. And what this showed was the planned expenditures by different types of schools at the elementary, middle, and high school, our CDCs, our adult school, and then our district-wide, our administrative facilities, and our program expenses. With that, it also shows the assumed revenue. The assumed revenue of $380 million in the general obligation bond, along with our state facilities program, developer fees, which we intentionally kept very low, just because there was question as to whether or not they would continue with the, under the current administration and the governor, but they are, they are continuing right now. And that brought us to a total assumed revenue of $403 million. This had us operating still in the red of about $19 million. But that $19 million is, as crazy as it may sound, is not a huge area of concern. Because when we talk about assumed revenue, we tend to figure that much more on the conservative side and not worrying about, or knowing that like the state facilities program, for example, will yield much more, as will the developer fees. But we won't, we would rather err on the side of caution when we brought this to the board back in November. So the next slide shows the project list, the sample ballot of the full text, the full ballot text. The board also had this in front of them when the board actually voted to place the general obligation bond on the March ballot. And these were what we called a listing of like our marquee projects, meaning the very large projects. The projects that would not only take a lot of time to plan, but that would consume a lot of dollars, but have a major impact at that school site and overall for the whole district. I don't think I need to read through them completely, but ideally, it's dealing with the Little Theater at Berkeley, at Berkeley High School. It's dealing with C building, the HVAC there. It's dealing with the lack of parking, which is an extreme problem at the high school for staff there. It's constructing and being committed to CTE across the district. Same thing with classrooms and classroom spaces, solar electricity, sustainability, resiliency programs. That's all very important. It came in very high. Not only is it about being good stewards of the environment and teaching our children to do the same, but it also has a major impact on the bottom line and on the general fund on our ongoing expenses. And then the last line dealt specifically to what we refer to as FFNE, which is furnitures, furniture fixtures and equipment. So from that, the next slide, again, the board has seen this, but the project list through modernization and new construction, it's what the board committed to doing, ensuring facility support through curriculum and program, enhancing STEM and CTE and PLCs, student support spaces, solar and sustainability, addressing equity issues across the district, creating self and safe and welcoming learning and work environments, and then continuing to correct infrastructure upgrades or to continuing infrastructure upgrades and system replacements and correcting operational deficiencies. So the next slide is what the board had specifically asked to see. There was a question as to how much has actually been spent at the middle schools. And what you have is you have three separate columns for each of the middle schools. And what we see on the first line is the total footprint. That's important because the larger the space, the more it does cost to maintain it. But what we'll see is out of measure I, which is the most recent bond, which ran from 2010 to it's still going right now as far as the projects, but it was from 2010 to 2020, there was $5.1 million spent at King, and the projects are listed below. $7.3 million was spent at Longfellow, and then Willard had $5.6 million. Now Shanita actually did me a great favor, so I could understand and we could all understand the historical value as well, and went back not only to the measure AA prior, or measure A prior, but also measure AA. So what we're doing is we're actually looking at, at the next dollar line there, the 20 years prior, so from 1990 to 2010. $36 million was spent at King. Now, a big portion of those dollars at King did deal with structural deficiencies, as well as ancillary projects that were created by correcting those structural deficiencies. Additionally, there was the need, just like at Longfellow, to actually construct the cafeteria. Once the sixth grade was moved over to King, the old cafeteria space was actually turned into classroom space, and that's where that came from. Those costs equaled around $27 million. So during that 20, that same 20 years, $17 million was spent at Longfellow, and roughly $13.8 million was spent at Willard. So with that, I can move on unless the board has.
John, I think you should move on.
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to keep an eye on time. CTE at the middle schools, so we're building middle schools, and these are Quin's, or quotes that Winn had provided. But basically, that middle school component is being built out. It's being built out in a way to feed into our high school. And then areas of focus that will include robotics, coding, so on and so forth. Okay? CTE at Longfellow. At this point, Longfellow is the only middle school that has a dedicated STEM maker space. After upgrades that CTE and facilities department completed in December, that space is suited to support the current MS STEM curriculum. Maker Space 2.0, and that term has been used a lot, that includes electrical and ventilation. There's been no further upgrades that have been defined or program curriculum that's been defined to date for that. It's important to note, because I think everybody who's on this has heard me say, we need the curriculum to be developed before we can design the space. A lot of times, there's this belief that if we build it, they will come. But without the curriculum, it's, it's impossible to do because we just don't know what it is that's needed there. So the, the next slide talks about the planning process and timeline, which I said I would discuss briefly. This was really just important, so I think people do have an idea of what it takes. The first is, there's been a lot of conversation around enhanced middle school CTE and a much larger program. In talking to Winn Skiles, our CTE coordinator, to develop that curriculum from the time he's told to do so, all the way through, getting it, getting it vetted, getting it fully built, and then board approved, that's an 18-month-long process. And during that same time, once that ball starts rolling, we can then start working on conceptual designs to define the space, the infrastructure and budget.
John, can I?
Yes.
One moment. Winn, I see you off there in the.
I am here, yep.
Yeah, so I just wanted to know before, if it's okay with you, John, before we move forward, if you wanted to add anything to?
Yes, two things. Two slides back, before the picture of the Longfellow, this one here. Just to let everyone listening and anyone concerned know, several of the things there do not require facilities upgrades. There are things, robotics, coding programming, digital media, that's more about equipment and curriculum development than the actual modifications to the space. So when we talk about 2.0, which is again ventilation and upgraded electrical at some future point, that isn't an obstacle to the further development of the curriculum that we're working on now. And also, we've made great strides. So this last year, just that we just completed, it was our first year of piloting the sixth-grade STEM maker wheel. So we are very engaged between the three middle schools. We actually have a very active team. I think Adam Berzen might still be on this call. He's been part of that team for the STEM maker wheel. And we have a CTE middle school lead, Debbie Lenz, who actually has some TSA time funded through some grant monies that we, we received to continue that work this next year. So again, we did some piloting this last school year. We know that everything's going to be a little bit interrupted and maybe our, our efforts will be stunted somewhat with closure and all of the questions around that. But we do have, we are fully engaged in developing the curriculum. I've worked very closely with John and Shanita over many, the last several years, and we really do, that program, program drives facilities development and not the other way around. And I don't want to take too much time, but I hope that helps to clarify.
Is it okay if I jump in here really quickly?
Of course, yeah.
Just really quick, Ty, go back to the space with the Longfellow. I just wanted to say that we did take some time to kind of go through and, and understand what the needs were, working with the teachers. And I think if we go back, the original CTE program that was planned, it was based on a different curriculum. And then again, sometimes with changes in leadership and wanting to move in a different direction. And then, again, sometimes with changes in leadership and wanting to move in a different direction, we are excited to just move forward with the space that we have. And we're moving from more of a maker tinker to more of a, Winn, you can probably explain this a little bit better, to more of a robotic STEM.
Yeah, STEM maker. The maker and experiential learning is still part of it, but we're really articulating as closely as we can with, in all middle school planning with pathways students will be able to explore in high school. The one thing that will likely not be an element of any middle school program would be large-scale carpentry, wood, for lots of reasons. Other than that, we are trying to mirror as much as possible digital media, technical theater, stagecraft, robotics and coding and programming as early exploration in middle school in the sixth grade and then seventh and eighth grade electives where students will be able to go more in depth.
And I just want to add that, you know, the, I do, I mean, obviously, a lot of this has been up to the school sites and districts, but I will say that the board has been, I think, pretty vocal about, and decisive about wanting what happens at the middle schools, like you're saying, Winn, to feed into what's going on at the high schools. And I understand that perhaps what's been going on at Longfellow under the current or under the former leadership, maybe, didn't completely comply with that. But I mean, she also wasn't here during, you know, for very long. So I do want to say that to some extent, this is, you know, this has been directed by board. You know, the board hearing, you know, kind of having an overview of what is available to students district-wise.
And the FFNE, it's all really clear in the picture that's presented currently on the screen. We came to the Facilities Board Subcommittee meeting several times last year, and they very much encouraged this project and were supportive, which is how we got that really sad old cafeteria space to look and function the way it does now. And it does serve our current needs. There, I would be happy to prepare a note. I don't want to take too much time today about all of the middle school planning. But we do have a highly skilled teacher in place at Longfellow for next year. We do have funding to offer after-school programming in this very space. Again, that a lot depends on how students are able to access spaces anywhere. But again, a phase two, I'm certainly an advocate of future upgrades for anything CTE, but I don't want people to be under the impression that the current space, that we can't still layer in many more elements of our future curriculum in the current space.
Thank you, Winn. Okay, John, do you want to go back to? I know that Ty needs to leave at exactly 2:30, so I want to make sure he gets the entire-
Yeah, no, absolutely. I appreciate that, and I'm definitely trying to get us through. So Ty, if I can ask you just to go back one slide and I'll be quick. But so we talked about the development of that curriculum. Schematic design, budget validation, and then construction documents and DSA approval. We listed here 12 to 18 months, and that is being a little bit on the generous side, depending on the size of the scope. That can go up to 24 months because it can take a full year to design. And then we have this huge timeline of six to 24 months for construction and DSA closeout. And the reason for that, again, is driven by the scope of the project. So obviously, some projects can be completed much quicker than others. The next slide is, I told the Subcommittee, what I would have is an idea of what can be done soon at Longfellow, and this is not to say that this is the only things that can be done at Longfellow. But this is sort of the low-hanging fruit that I talked about earlier, as things we can definitely pick at and get done relatively quickly, that we see that there's a need for, and also that, looking back, we've found that the community would like to see as well. A digital marquee at the school's entrance, a large digital marquee. This was actually requested at the end of the year by the vice principal who was leaving, Doreen Brockamontis. A new multi-sport turf field with improved drainage, that was discussed a little bit earlier on in the meeting. New fencing and concrete separation walls, similar to what they have over at BHS. That is a larger project, and it would take a little bit of time. But we could change it to have more of that retaining wall, similar to what you see along MLK at the high school with the wrought iron fencing on top. New gates. We can do an auditorium modernization. And then also a garden update. There was an email that came in earlier today that talked about a gazebo in the garden. Great idea. But I would say, with that, let's take that a step further. What we could do is actually create an outdoor learning environment out there where that does offer shade. It does offer some access to technology. It offers some protection from the weather, but it is an outdoor environment nonetheless. So with that, you know, we would have to go back and look to see where we would pull that money from. Because obviously, we've got to take it from another project, but I'd be happy to go back and work on that. So the last slide is really about just looking for some-
Money for all of those projects or for just some of them?
That's totally at the discretion of the Subcommittee and the board, right? These are things that, you know, we can do. I would say if I had to just throw a number at the wall right now, Judy, this is going to range probably in the eight to 10 million dollar range to complete the items on that list. But with that, I do believe that we could actually tackle those in probably within about two years, I would say. There is a question that just popped up by Laura Babbitt in the Q and A, and I'd love to just answer it real quickly, about why we can't do lockers. So it's not that we can't do lockers, but that's not what we would deem as low-hanging fruit. So lockers, while it seems like they should be a relatively easy fix, you buy some lockers and bolt them to the wall. It's actually not that simple. There are ADA implications. There's fire life safety implications for path of travel and devices. And then there's also structural implications, because lockers have to sit on concrete curbs. And without structural review, you cannot pour concrete curbs on top of existing concrete slabs. So can they be done? Yes. They're not on the list just because they're not that low-hanging fruit. So it's not something that's really simple to do.
I'm sorry, let me just say that somebody just said in the chat that the lockers could be outside. Will you respond to that?
You know, the biggest problem with the lockers outside is dealing with the weather and the implications of that, as well as vandalism, breaking in. And, you know, we see that everywhere at all of our schools. Can it be done? Anything can be done. But would I recommend putting them outside? I would not. Because then you're sending those students outside in the rain to collect their books and their personal belongings as well. So, and you know, a great comeback for that would be to put an overhang above it. But if we put an overhang above it, we're back to the same implications that we were before. So again, it's not that we can't do it. It's just that what I've tried to really highlight on this list here is just sort of things that we can do relatively quickly to actually improve the Longfellow community.
Right. Thank you.
So with that, you know, the next slide just really, it talks about a possible reallocation and planning process. And with that, I would need some direction from the Subcommittee. Would the Subcommittee want us to consider those projects? Would the Subcommittee want to have all of them done, some of them done? Would you like them brought to the board? If you want staff to create a plan to that, I would need to know what bucket of allocations should be reconsidered. In other words, at the last board meeting, there was a suggestion made of maybe we just look at the middle school dollars. Would that be the intent of the Subcommittee? Or would the Subcommittee say, no, we want to look at all of the dollars? We are bringing four, we are bringing four of the marquee projects to the board for approval tonight, only because they have an incredibly long lead time and planning process associated with them. So that does speak to about 100 million dollars, but there is still 280 million there that is allocated. But I would need to understand from the Subcommittee where you want us to pull from.
So why don't we, so I don't know how long the presentation is.
That's the last slide.
Great. So Ty, why don't we go ahead and talk about this?
Sure. Can I, I'm going to unshare this then?
Yeah.
Well, all right.
Well, otherwise people, we can't, I guess we could, you want me to, I don't know, I can go back to sharing if you want.
Make a copy of it?
Well, would you rather I shared it? I can go back to sharing it.
Or will you send it? I mean, I just want to make sure we talk about those three things.
These three things that are up there right now?
Yes. Well, we are the Subcommittee, so what bucket of allocation should be, you know, I want to talk about, like, I think you and I should, this is what I was thinking, and I'd love to hear what you're thinking. But, you know, I would love to, you know, first articulate as a committee whether or not we want to, you know, whether we want to accept, you know, whether we want to move forward with the the early action things that John just talked about, you know, the things that we could do soon, if we wanted to prioritize some other ones. And then like, how we would like to direct the staff to move forward if we do want to move forward on more.
Okay.
As you want, so a little bit more.
That sounds good. Do you want to, do you want me to say what I think?
Yes.
Okay. What?
I already know what I think, so.
Well, since I didn't say anything before, I just wanted to thank everybody who's here and John and Director Police for that presentation and Ms. Stevenson. So these are my, I'll start, Judy, with just some, like, my general thoughts, and then try to answer that question that you just posed. Does that sound good to you? So I do, what do I want to say? Well, I want to say something really quick in response to something that Ms. Lewis said about the sort of structural reality of Longfellow in relation to the other middle schools and sort of the burden that our current assignment plan has put on the Longfellow community to sort of constantly be fighting for equitable treatment in both ed services and facilities. And so I'm just going to say this and then move on because this is not, this is about facilities. But I think the answer is to redo our assignment plan so that Longfellow is not constantly having to fight for equitable resources. So I'll just say that and move on. That said, because the school is, I do think the board has, and Judy, you said this, and when Julie Sinai was on the committee with me last year, as I think Ms. Stevenson said, we we both sort of expressed really strongly our desire for for the board and the district to use the facilities dollars to try to ensure equity for Longfellow. So I think it is something that we, that the board all does, you know, feel strongly about. And looking at the past allocations of resources is interesting and I think useful. It was interesting to me to see the allocation for Measure I dollars. But I also really take to heart your point, John, about the per capita dollar amount being sort of not necessarily the most relevant statistic to look at. That said, kind of doesn't matter what the past is, in a way, because right now, there are needs at Longfellow that haven't really been addressed because of, honestly, just because I think of the way that the process worked out this past year, where my understanding is there were big community events at the other middle schools, and there just wasn't at Longfellow, and that's not a critique of the facilities department, or, it's not a critique of the facilities department. But it means that some of these things that are on the slide now, and some of the things that Paz emailed about today and that other members of the community have talked about, just haven't, didn't really make it into the list. And so I also think that the curb appeal aspect of some of these things is really important. It's, if we, especially, whether we stay as a choice school, which I hope we don't, or if we move to a zoned school. Either way, I think the physical appearance of the facility matters. I happen to think Willard, I have a little soft spot for Longfellow and kind of think Willard is our ugliest middle school, but everybody else seems to disagree and thinks that Longfellow is. So I'm fine with that, and I think that the Berkeley High fence, concrete gate kind of thing is beautiful. So having talked with, having talked with John earlier about some of these things, and hearing the price tag of eight to 10 million dollars, I don't have a strong opinion about the field or, you know, which of these should be a priority. Obviously, the marquee, I understand, is a really small dollar amount relative to the fencing, which I understand is like a $5 million price tag. But in answer to your question, Judy, this is what I think and would propose. I think we should prioritize, I think we should, I think we should-
We lost you.
You froze, Ty.
Am I here now?
Yep, you're back.
How, where in my rambling did you leave off?
Really?
You should.
Really, what I think?
I just wanted to keep you in suspense. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. What I think we should do is say, out of this 380 million dollar bond, staff has helpfully identified projects that roughly, and I understand this is a totally rough guess, roughly come to about eight to 10 million dollars. And my understanding of what you mean by low-hanging fruit is that they can be done roughly within the next two years, so we can see some kind of relatively quick return on this investment. That we should ask staff to prioritize those, to allocate that money to these projects, or some version of these projects to be kind of fleshed out later, hopefully in consultation with the new leadership and the parent community and the teachers and the classified staff. And that you, and that, and that what that will require is going back into the 380 million dollars and finding what eight to 10 million dollars we no longer have to spend on something else. And I understand that that's a bigger question that maybe we could ask them to come back in the fall with. It's not a huge question. It's a small amount relative to the whole thing. And maybe it can just come out of the other middle schools for now. It's not going to screw up the whole 10-year process to say, reallocate 8 million dollars. But my feeling is that we should probably do that, and I want to hear, obviously, what you think, Judy.
Well, I have two questions. First, well, I have one question, I guess. John, you did mention that the locker project, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about the lockers. You know, that is, I actually don't remember from the listening campaign if the students identified lockers. But, you know, lockers are, you know, you have your private space in your school space. And, you know, that does seem like, you know, quality of life thing for our students. And so I kind of wanted to go a little bit further to see, like, how much that would cost, you know, could we do that? Was your proposal talking about putting them all in the first floor? Would that be having them in the second floor? You know, so I just wanted to have a better sense of how much, if it's actually possible to do, or if, you know, if it's like structurally possible, and how much it would cost.
Yeah, so I don't have a wag for you on that, or a ROM, a rough order of magnitude of what it would cost just yet. Just because, again, this was really focused on that low-hanging fruit and understanding that the lockers would not be a part of that. Typically, you would want to do lockers when you do a large-scale modernization. Because during a large modernization is when you see a lot of times that you're redemising walls, you're changing hallways, you're changing room types, you're changing really the path of flow and the path of travel through the campus. So you want to make sure those lockers end up in the right area. That being said, I'm sorry, but real quick, that being said, we can still do the lockers, right, as a larger project? But to answer your question, Judy, I don't have that number for you or that planning. Because during the facilities master planning, that was not something that was ever identified as a need at Longfellow.
And that might have been, I mean, in part, I was on the committee then, before I got sick. So I, you know, that might have been part been my, I don't know, like my shortcoming, because maybe, like, my kid never mentioned lockers when they went to Longfellow, but that doesn't mean that they're not super important. It's come up a lot. So what-
Wendy- I wanted to chime in really quickly. John, it was probably your first day when you arrived, when they had that Longfellow meeting, right?
Within about a week, I think, yeah.
So, you know, I would have to go back to the actual drawing itself because, of course, HY took notes, copious notes about what was said at that meeting. And I want to say, make sure that if lockers didn't come up in that meeting from your memory, I just know that lockers is consistently one of the things that constantly comes up. So I just wanted to chime in there.
But also, I just want to say, I think, and I don't know, I'm not sure that the staff, the teaching staff is so in favor of lockers. So I just want to say that there's some, it's not necessarily unanimous that, within the entire Longfellow community. I don't, but anyway, just to-
Okay, well, I guess- Okay, well, I, I guess, um, I don't know, um. See, Ms. Michelle, you're still on here, so I was, do you feel comfortable responding to that? Or not? I don't mean to call you out, but you are a teacher who's here. Well, so.
No, no, there she is.
Right. That's okay. I'm putting you on the spot, Crystal, like you put my kid on the spot.
Um, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't feel like we've had conversations about lockers enough to say, like, yes, how I think teachers feel a certain way about it at all.
Okay, thanks. So it seems like, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, sorry, I don't, yeah.
So it seems to me, um, Ty, that what, what I would propose is that we actually make a decision about kind of a general, like, you know, eight to ten million dollars. If that's what we want to, you know, like, shift around so that extra amount is, is invested in Longfellow. And then, you know, do a little bit more research on what it would mean to create lockers for, for kids. And then we can have another discussion kind of at the community about, you know, about prioritizing how we would add additional funds, those additional funds.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe, that makes sense to me. I, I mean, maybe, so John, I mean, if, if the, because we have two board meetings left, right, Judy? So if we, um.
Actually, we have one, I'm sorry, we're probably, we're gonna propose to have one tonight on July fifteenth as well.
Oh, okay. Um, uh, I'm just, now I'm, I'm just like processing that, another board meeting. But, um, no, I know we need to, um, it just, so, okay, so, so maybe just to, like, get concrete about it. The proposal then, as you sort of amended it, would be to, uh, and so, John, tell us what you think of this. To recommend to the board, or if that's what we're doing, that, that, that the board, um, asks staff to allocate eight to ten million dollars specifically for Longfellow projects that I think we're saying that can be done in the, in the next two years. Maybe this list, or maybe including other things potentially like lockers. And that, and that the board do that, so that the board is voting to do that. And then the, the, the details of what those are, they, they can come back to us with. Either maybe first to the subcommittee and then to the board, probably, presumably in the fall. But that, but before July fif, by July fifteenth, July first to July fifteenth, the board make that vote so that staff has their clear, and the community has that clear understanding and direction that, that we're doing that. Does that make sense?
Uh, it does, but what I would say is, to your point that you said, well, maybe this list, maybe not. If you want to see an investment happen sooner than later in Longfellow, we have to understand what those projects are that we're actually designing, right? So if, if the subcommittee wants this to be the low hanging fruit, right? And I'm just using this as an example, I would bring this to the board on July one with a wag, um, of saying that, hey, look, we're probably in the ballpark of eight to ten million dollars. But we'll update you in August with an actual rough order of magnitude to the cost, right? Because at that point, we'll have begun design. At the same time, I can also commit to bringing back in August a cost and a plan to implement lockers into the Longfellow Middle School.
That would be separate from this?
Yes. I, I mean, we can include it, but I just, I don't have that number prepared for you.
There is, I mean, there is, I mean, it's a whole conversation going on in the chat about this. And, I mean, I, I do support that, but I also recognize that we, you know, the other things that are on our facilities list, master list, are also needs in the district. And, you know, I, so, I mean, I don't want to just make the decision, you know, that we're gonna spend fifteen million dollars on Longfellow without, without really looking at the, you know, the, the, um, the, uh, what's that word I'm looking for? Just like the, the costs, you know, what we're gonna lose out on. And, you know, I, 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 I'm sure that actually, Ty, you might know exactly, like, that district-wide work, like, what it is and stuff. But we would have to, I would have to understand some more specifics about the other projects.
Well, that's why, yeah, I mean.
Because, you know, I agree with you that I think Willard, you know, what, what we've seen is that Willard, especially in this last little period of time, Willard has gotten the least investment. But because they have had a strong principal, they, you know, the reputation hasn't been that, that, you know, there haven't been a lot of complaints about it, but, because it, you know, the, the programs are good. But I, I agree that this, the site itself is, could probably, you know, could also use some improvements.
Yeah, well, I mean, to me, it's about the demographics of the school. Like, we, um, I guess I agree with the people who are saying, look, this is a school with vastly higher percentage of, um, unduplicated kids and kids of color than our other middle schools. And as long as that remains the case, um, I think we should invest. I think what equity means it would be to invest disproportionate resources. I mean, I think we, you know, yeah, agree on that. But to me, so look, having, look, I'm comfortable with saying we can find eight million dollars in the, in the rest of the tenure plan, um, or, or asking staff to. And, and, um, and it might mean, you know, like, the, for example, the King Science Building is, um, is really, like, decrepit. And, and is, is high up, I think, on, on, if we looked at overall middle school needs, I think the science building at King is, is high up on the list. But, you know, I, to me, equity means deprioritizing that, um, wing over the things we're talking about at Longfellow. Because, purely because the demographics of the school community. So, I guess, so, I mean, yes, of course, what you're saying, I think, is true. We don't want to upend the whole plan. But I feel comfortable with, like, eight to ten million dollars, um, doing that, or asking the board if they want to do it, you know? Because it's not just up to me and you, I guess. And, and then saying to staff, you know, tell us, come back in August, having redone the plan, not like throwing the whole thing out and starting all over, but maybe just saying, you know, we're gonna have to spend four million dollars less at King and, and four million dollars less on solo. I know, it's all important stuff, as John said, we, we can't even fund all the things we need to do. So I'm not trying to diminish that. But, anyway, I guess I feel, because if we wait too long, and this is, I guess, my hesitation about, this is why I like you, what you proposed, John, about the lockers being separate. If we wait too long, you know, then it's gonna be another year before we can start any of these things. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to the idea that we get, we let staff get started on this. If the will of the majority of the board, you know, is to, is to make this reallocation.
So i- if I'm hearing this correctly, and I know we're coming up on time, so I just want to make sure. It sounds like for July one, you'd like me to bring, you and Judy would like me to bring an item to the board, asking for, to, to actually be able to begin work on these particular projects, this low hanging fruit that's been identified, and be very clear in articulating the fact that we, as a very, very rough number, we estimate that cost to be eight to ten million. We'll be able to update them further in August. And additionally, in August, we'll be bringing another project for Longfellow for consideration to the board of lockers and with that, uh, actual cost of that project as well. Is that, am I, am I hearing you correctly?
Um, I think that, yes, I think that is, that, that, um, does reflect what we're saying. I think, though, that knowing where that money's gonna come from is something that we should actually talk about as a board. Because, I mean, I actually feel like, you know, we've put the least amount of money into King lately because it is the best facility, and, you know, it's a brand-new school. And a lot of, I mean, it's a lot newer of a facility. But, you know, the science, that the sci, like, the science building does really need work. And we have a thousand school students at King. So I also don't want to, I, I feel like it's this weird, like, weird tension that, um, we, like, there should not, like, we shouldn't work, we shouldn't do work to King because it is the most, it's, it's the, kind of the most sought-after school in general. You know, the, for people who put in, um, I, I don't know, maybe it's not the most sought-after school. But I just don't want to have, like, some relief, like, some inverse kind of bias against that school, which we certainly did last time, um, again, because of the fact that, you know, King is King.
But, so Judy, but wouldn't we, either way, we're gonna have to, to me, I agree with you about the board having, to make that decision. To me, it's just a question of timing, like, either way, the board is gonna have to agree to where we take that eight million to ten million dollars from, right? So I guess all I'm saying is, can we see if the board agrees with, with prioritize, with, with reallocating eight to ten million dollars for Longfellow? And. Like, three or six to, or have that whole, as a board, by, about where, and not necessary, because we've got years to do it in July, but to come back in fall and have that discussion of where we're gonna. Did you, did I lose myself?
Yeah, you froze.
Where are we gonna get, take that money from?
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead.
From, from staff perspective, I can bring this to the board as far as asking to allocate these dollars, right, for July one. Um, I would not have time between now and then, just because it would be due by Friday, to, to tell you where exactly in that, in that master plan that that money would come from.
Yeah, and I'm not saying take it from the science wing at King, I'm just saying, there's a lot of things in the, on the project list. And, and, and I think we could probably find it, and the board will need to agree with whatever you propose.
I agree, that's, that is, um, I, I, I agree with that. And I don't think, I just, you know, I, I would have to see the specifics. But I do think a big portion of the King allocation is the science building. I could be wrong about that, but, so.
I think it is the King Science Building, actually.
Question, I just, I just raised that as an example, the King, I mean, there's, there's three hundred and eighty million dollars worth of projects that we've identified.
Exactly. So I'm, that's, I was just saying that I, I do support this idea of bringing this, bringing these low hanging fruit. Although I am a little unclear what needs to be done to the auditorium, so.
It's just a refresh, i- it really, it could definitely use to be refreshed and some improved audiovisual equipment like what King got.
All right. Well, so I was just gonna, so I do agree that let's bring that on July first. I think it's a good idea to make the lockers a separate project because it sounds like it is like a much bigger, bigger thing and it's gonna take more time. But I just wanted to also say that I, I don't know how we can prioritize it, but I do think that that is, the fact that one of our three middle schools doesn't have lockers is, you know, kind of a thing. So, um, you know, we, it's something that we should really try to correct. But I do think these low hanging fruit are a great place to start. And we've heard, you know, most of these things we have heard from the community. So, yes, why don't you bring it to the meeting on July first with, you know, with some suggestions of, of, like, ideas of what we could deprioritize?
Okay, very good.
And can I, can I, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, okay, wait, just two things. One is, John, I'm not crazy about the term low hanging fruit, because I think it's confusing. I would, I think what you're trying to say is short-term, but impactful.
It can be done quickly, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then, uh, I guess I don't feel, I guess I don't have strong feelings about the last thing you just said, Judy, about bringing suggestions of what we could reallocate from, because, um, because we're not, are you, we're not saying that we necessarily have to make that, that, we don't have to make that decision at the same time, right? Where the eight million dollars is coming from.
Yeah. I don't think that's.
Well, no, I, I would say that it's, it's, um, you've already prioritized, well, it's going to the board, that you are looking to move forward with some projects. But you are, you still have a few, um, pieces that you could move up in the allocation. So you still have some funds available to do that. And actually, you know, come to think of it, you've only kind of identified some specific projects. And then this would be along with those specific projects, where the rest of it can, um, be relooked at or looked at, in a sense. You haven't done that just yet.
Okay, so that makes sense to me. Um, I do not, I, I did want to mention to you, Ty, I do not recommend, like, I, you know, we got a rec, we got a letter from one of our colleagues. And I, I would, I don't support taking that project off of the list. So if you do, then we should probably.
Wait, sorry, what, what, what do you?
Was that a letter from Julie Sinai, asking us to, to actually take the Berkeley?
I don't think I got that.
Off, oh, you didn't get it?
I didn't get it, but I don't, I agree with you.
Okay. Because I think we've talked about that project, it got prioritized last time, and then it got taken off of the list. And I think we should just go ahead and start.
I do, I do too. And I think that, just since you brought it up, um, it's, I, one thing I, can we just talk about that for one minute?
Yeah, yeah. Two minutes, and then you have to get off the phone.
What I've realized, I care about, I think we have tennis courts. It's never been my highest priority, but I think it, we've been talking about it for a long time, I think we should do it. I've really become convinced that the lack of parking for the high school teachers, um, you know, is a real, I, I'm being told I'm unstable here, is, is really important. So that's the reason I really think it's, we should move forward.
Yes, I agree. Even though, you know, I sat in these meetings for years, this committee meeting, and, you know, there were the, the tennis people, like, they were strong advocates, and almost to the point where it had the inverse impact, but, um, you know, but, I, I mean, just to be honest with you, but the, um, I'm gonna get shit for that, but it's okay. So, um.
Now, you can say, you can say whatever you want now, Judy.
Exactly. But the parking, the, this, the, like, the, um, the, um, you know, the demand for the parking, because it is so expensive to live in Berkeley, and so many of our teachers do have to drive here, whether we like it or not. Whether we politically agree with it or not, they do have to. And they have to go out, like, every hour to pump their, their, um, so that, that's really been convincing to me, too, so.
A lot of them are gonna run out and move their car every hour, or every two hours.
And that impacts our students, that really impacts our students' learn.
We, we might have to say that tonight.
Yes, we will, and I hope other people will too, but we would, I, I'm gonna say that, and I hope you will. Um, okay, so we're not passing, I just wanted to address that because we did get.
Yeah.
Because Julie did request that we make, that that decision come out of this committee. So it sounds like.
Oh, I, somehow I missed that. Okay.
Okay, so, um, so, um, at two thirty, what we have come out of is that we're gonna prioritize the Longfellow, what are we calling them now? Immediate, like, quick act, like, short-term projects?
Short-term projects.
And, um, and that, you're gonna bring that into, on July first. And then in August, we will get a sense of the locker project and how much it costs. And so we can take that into account with the remaining projects.
Okay.
And we're not, we're not, um, we're not gonna put the Berkeley High project down.
Okay.
All right. Does that sound good, Vice President Dopper?
Yeah, thank you, that was really great. Um, I mean, the, we were able to do all that, and I, I have to go right now.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I'm sorry, I have to go.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Who, me?
I don't know, whoever just said something, I, maybe it was John.
I, I said, thank you.
Are you guys going to officially adjourn or not at work?
Yeah, so why don't we, well, did you get, did you, um, John, you can go.
Okay, I'm gonna go, bye.
Everything you needed?
Yeah, I was gonna give you a project update, but it's not too different from the last. There's just a lot happening across the district right now. You're doing a, a tour of one of our campuses with me later this week. Um, and we can definitely update the, the, uh, we can definitely update the community at the next facilities subcommittee meeting. But there's a lot happening right now.
I mean, is it, is it a lot of work for you to, to write that, like, to, to do a written update? Because we ran out of time?
No.
All right.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do, we can, we could put something out probably next week for you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you too, Shanita, and you win, and all of you, thanks for coming.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.